At 6:30, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Verify compliance with open meetings law. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, the agenda is adopted. Attendance, everyone is here this evening. If you are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we'll move on to two public comments. Are there any public comments? Alright, we'll move on to three. AP Scholars 24-25.
Alright, I get the privilege of announcing or talking about our AP Scholars tonight, and I'm excited to do that. Now, these are AP Scholars from 24-25. Obviously, that was last year. So, there were kids that were seniors that obviously may not be back tonight for us to recognize, but there's also some juniors from last year and some sophomores from last year, so we're really excited. Now, just a really quick thing for you all, AP does not stand for Associated Press. It stands for Advanced Placement. And Advanced Placement is a series of courses that provide rigorous college-level curriculum, and they culminate in an exam. And generally, getting a three on the exam is considered, you know, you met the, kind of that college standard. In the past, you know, those courses would, you'd be able to transfer, just about every university, you could transfer those credits. Now, it's kind of changed a little bit where it depends on the institution, which, what they do with the credits that you take. But it looks really good, you know, on college resumes and things like that, saying that, you know, "I was able to do some college-level coursework in high school." So, we're really, really proud of all the students that we have. So, we're gonna get into it. We have a fair amount of our students here tonight, obviously, and their parents, so we're excited to have them here. So, students, we'll call you up kind of by, like, level, and if you're gonna come up and you're gonna explain to the board what's your favorite AP class you took and what the most challenging AP class is that you took. Okay? Sound fair? Alright, so Jennifer, can we go to the next slide, please? Just so you guys know, there's these three categories. There's the AP Scholar, and this last year, we had 47 students that were classified as AP Scholars. There's, the next classification is AP Scholar with Honor, and I'll define those a little bit when we get to each one. We had 13 students that were AP Scholars with honors, and their average score on their AP test was 3.68. And then, the third and final distinction is the AP Scholar with Distinction. And we had 28 of those students last year, and that group of kids, their average AP score was a 4.17. Remember, a three is the score that, you know, everybody's kind of shooting for, so this is really great. So, next slide, if we could go to. So, our first group of kids, and you can see them all up here, are the AP Scholars. Now, AP Scholars is granted to students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams, so that, not just one, but three AP exams. So, the students that are with us tonight, so when I call your name, if you can come up and just stand up here, and there's a microphone on the table, to give your little spiel to us. Students that are here tonight are Genevieve Beasley, Jenna Burse, Addison Cole, Lana Dragasek, I'm sorry if I didn't do so well on that name, Quinn Mathie, Wyatt Pups, Kira Thompson, Aurora Torres, and Zachary Vogel. So, if all those guys can come up here so we can recognize them and give them a big round of applause. Right behind the, yeah, you go right behind the table, behind the table, sorry.
Actually, can you guys go here? That's okay, that's okay. I didn't get very good directions, but.
Yeah, I figured you guys are AP Scholars. No, just kidding. I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. So, why don't you, there's a microphone right here, so if someone would grab the microphone.
The hand one?
Yeah, the hand one. If you guys could, yeah, start at the end, excellent. And if you could just share what your favorite AP class you took was, and what was the most challenging AP class that you took. It doesn't project, it's just for the online thing, yes, sorry.
My favorite AP class was AP US Government and Politics, and the hardest one was AP US History.
I would say the one that I liked the most was definitely, oh, it was definitely AP, I don't know. I took three, but they're all, like, kind of good. I would say it's probably the first one I took, it was AP Human Geography. And then, the worst one, well, not the worst, but, yeah. It was, it's probably one of the ones that I'm in now, which is AP Language, that class?
Yep.
My favorite was Computer Science A. The hardest, I think, was AP Gov, taken.
I think my favorite is AP Gov, and the hardest one was AP Human Geography.
My favorite was probably AP Economics, but I think it was also the hardest for me, just because it was like two tests in one.
My favorite was AP Biology, and then, my most challenging one was AP Calculus AB.
My favorite one was AP United States Government and Politics, and then, my hardest one was AP United States History.
My favorite is AP, AP US History, and it's probably also the hardest, but I really liked it.
My favorite is, that I took was AP Psychology, and my, the most challenging one I took was AP US History.
Well, let's give these guys another round of applause. Yeah, if you guys could go right over there, and she's gonna get you guys a picture, you wanna sit that right there.
Do one quick picture.
Yeah.
Mic drop.
Yeah, it's not crowded. It's for video online stuff.
Alright, we do like, three on this side, and then, three on this side, and then, on that side. Yes, you know, just say the word. Perfect, lovely. Yeah, in front a little, perfect, perfect. Alright, you go, three, two, one. Thank you.
Alright, so our, next slide, Jennifer. So, on our next slide, we are recognizing our AP Scholars with Honor, and those are granted to students who receive an average score of at least 3.25 on all the AP exams that they've taken, and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. So, you can see the list up there, the students that are here with us tonight are Jacob Fedrickovich, Aiden Maloney, Wesley McDonald, and Charles Mecklenburg. So, if those guys can come up, we'd love to recognize them. Actually, it fell, it fell right down there, yeah. Alright, do you guys remember the story? Favorite AP class and most challenging AP class?
I'd say my favorite AP class is probably AP US History, just a great teacher. And I'd say my most difficult AP class is probably AP Government.
These students are granted to students who receive an average score of a 3.5 on all AP
I'd probably say that my favorite one was AP Calc AB, and I'd say that that was also
exams taken, and the scores of three or higher in five or more of these exams. So, tonight, we have Andres Carr, Ethan Jakobowski, David Radke, and Benjamin Sutton joining
the hardest one.
I'd say my favorite AP class was AP Biology, and my least favorite was AP Language and
us, so let's give them a round of applause.
Composition.
My favorite AP class was AP Calculus AB, and is also probably the hardest.
I think my hardest AP class was probably AP United States History, and my favorite
Awesome. Well, let's give these guys one more round of applause.
was AP Government.
My favorite class was also AP US Government, and the most challenging one for me was AP Calculus AB.
My favorite was AP Calc AB, and my least favorite was Lang.
My favorite one was AP Calc BC, and my hardest one, I think, was AP US History.
Awesome. Thank you guys so much. And then, our final group of AP Scholars are AP Scholars with Distinction. These students are granted to students who receive an average score of a 3.5 on all AP exams taken, and the scores of three or higher in five or more of these exams. So, tonight, we have Andres Carr, Ethan Jakobowski, David Radke, and Benjamin Sutton joining us, so let's give them a round of applause.
I think my hardest AP class was probably AP United States History, and my favorite was AP Government.
My favorite class was also AP US Government, and the most challenging one for me was AP Calculus AB.
My favorite was AP Calc AB, and my least favorite was Lang.
My favorite one was AP Calc BC, and my hardest one, I think, was AP US History.
Awesome. Thank you guys so much. Now, parents and students, thank you all so much for being here tonight. That kind of concludes the recognition part. We'd love to have you stay for the remainder of our meeting, but we completely understand that, you know, you may have other things going on tonight, so we'll take like a couple minutes, and you guys can kind of make your way out if you don't want to stay.
Congratulations.
So, again, congratulations. That was a good one, the last guys.
I know, that was so nice.
I was like, alright.
It's always fun, like, I love these, his favorite is AP Calc, that's amazing.
Oh, my gosh, or like AP Econ. Oh, my gosh, right? I'm like.
That was my favorite.
That's impressive.
Yeah, I think when you like numbers, you just really like them.
Yes, yes.
I've heard AP US History is really tough, though, just like across the board, like, everywhere. Yeah. But it was really great to sit here, how many people thought it was like their favorite, too.
Alright, we will move on to number four, consent agenda. A, gifts and donations, B, approval of October 13th, 2025, meeting minutes, approval of September 29th, 2025, meeting minutes, approval of September 22nd, meeting minutes, school safety drills, vouchers, vouchers payable, and ECCP requests. Would anybody like to remove an item?
Jesse, can I pull A, please?
Okay. Any others? If not, do I have a motion to approve B through G?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? B through G have been approved. Go ahead, Cassie.
Sure, so we would like to recognize and thank WSA Supply of Kenosha for their donation of $500 worth of tools, which includes speed squares for the construction course students at the high school. So, thank you to WSA Supply and Kenosha.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve 4A?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, 4A is passed. Alright, we'll move on to 5, action. A, consider the purchase of a robotic floor scrubber. We had this on our meeting last time. Do you have any other questions before I ask for a motion? I guess my only question would be, has anything changed since the presentation last time? Oh, okay. Do I have a motion to approve 5A?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, 5A carries. Move on to action item 5B. Do I have a motion to approve the 2025-2026 adopted budget?
So moved.
I'll second.
You have something else? Okay, John's gonna come up and.
So, I'll go through some of the just the changes, and these were, this was all presented at the annual meeting, but as of October 15th, we got final numbers from the Department of Revenue and DPI, which did change some things. A couple of things got changed, so we'll go through those. We are in the October one, so we're finalizing this. Again, this was the, this will be the final budget that we use for this year. On the next slide, we, a couple of things, I'll go through the major, this is really the changes of these. We got final equalized value, I did 4.4%, that was the initial projection, and a little bit conservative, but it came back at 4.7, so that did bump it up a little bit, by a little bit. That's about, I think, $7 million, but, which is a big chunk, when you're talking 2 billion, not a huge amount. That directly affected the mill rate, simply because it's the total tax levy divided by equalized value, so when the denominator goes up, it does decrease it, which it did, which we'll talk about in a second, what that did, but it did directly affect our mill rate.
0.3% bumped it up to what? 2 billion, 2 million?
I'm sorry. Correct, it went from 2,659,000 to 2,666,000, yeah. Yep. Private school vouchers, we were at about $628,000 last year, so I conservatively bumped that up to 750, which was a big increase, and it came back at $773,000. So, again, much bigger than I anticipated, and again, I'm very conservative when it comes to that, and so, again, people are taking advantage of this, and it's just continuing to grow. So, again, a couple more, a little bit more information up there of what that really does add to our mill rate, it's about 29 cents of the 733, so it's a big chunk of that that we have to collect and adds to that. Finalized revenue limit, projected that top number, and the final amount came in about $82,000 more, which, again, is a good thing. The projection that DPI gives is based on initial numbers that they have, and that's why all of our numbers in our budget have to be put in, so that they can get, and our annual reports have to be put in, so they can get finalized numbers, so that's why they're always gonna be off a little bit. So, in this case, it helped us a little bit, we got about $82,000 more than what we had thought from our revenue limit, so that was, that was good. And again, significant increase from last year, mostly based on the 325 per pupil, which we knew was coming, so that's mostly where that came from.
John, can you go to the last slide? So, on a $300,000 home, the person pays their tax, and of that tax, $87 goes towards paying this.
Vouchers.
Right.
Correct.
It's not additional, it goes, the money they pay comes out of there.
Right, we collect it for the state, and then, the state takes it from our taxes, yep.
Which doesn't, which.
There's no benefit.
It's us.
Yeah, there's no benefit to us, to us, yep.
Okay, thank you.
We're simply a pass-through, correct. State aid, thank you. The state aid did come in a little bit, a little bit better, which was, which was great. Again, they based their projection on one thing, and then, they wait till they get final numbers before we can get it, so we did get about $264,000 more than we thought from state aid. We knew we were gonna lose a bunch, and we did, but we lost $200,000 less than I thought we were gonna lose from initial projections. So, again, there was no state aid added to the revenue limit, and so, we ended up getting less because of those property poor districts that spent more. The tax levy, so this is what we talked about, the tax levy did change, and we, and we were be able, we were able to drop it down a little bit, and again, part of that was because we got more state aid, so that dropped it down, which then caused our mill rate to drop a little bit. So, our ending mill rate, instead of the projection at 741, we ended up at 733. Still an increase, which we knew we were gonna have because of no additional state aid in the pot, and our decrease from that, but, so that did get put on the taxpayers' backs to be able to do that, and again, we knew that was coming, it's just a little bit better. But do notice that, while, I don't want to say $181,000 is chump change, it's great, but $181,000 in the grand scheme of things of a $19 million tax levy, it really does impact the mill rate more significantly, so while we did drop nine cents, the total tax levy really, I don't want to say only, because it's nice, $181,000 less that we have to tax our taxpayers, but in the grand scheme of things, wasn't significant. So, again, this is why you look at both the tax levy and the mill rate, so.
Just a correction, it's eight cents.
Oh, I'm sorry, I said nine, didn't I? I'm sorry, thank you. Yep, eight cents. The next slide just shows kind of where we've been. We are, again, we have been, over the last several years, much lower than we were just, you know, eight years ago. So, again, we were kind of hoping for a steady one, or, you know, from where we were last year, but we obviously know the reason for that, so I'm not gonna harp on that, but we did go up, but a little less than I thought, but simply because of the lack of state aid. Open enrollment numbers came in pretty much what we had, what we had projected, so we're sitting at 446 as open enrollment in, and 165 open enrolled out. That open enrollment out, I think maybe one of you asked at the last one, it did bump up a little bit, I think we were 137 or 138 last year out, so we're up a little bit more this year, so I think that was one of you, if I'm not mistaken. So, which still, again, which I had projected, I think, a little bit more than 2.8, I think I had 2.86 in there, but we're about 2.83 million surplus, so off the same. There were really no other major changes besides what I just covered in the budget. Again, I was able to, again, to be quite honest with you, be a little more conservative in places where I didn't have, wasn't able to do that, but since we did get a little bit more revenue limit, and to be able to just make sure we're covering electricity and transportation increases and some other things that we've talked about, or that we were looking at. So, but our revenues and our expenditures are still balanced, and we have that at those dollar amounts. Any questions? And that is the, oh, did I have that on? Sorry. Yep, that's it, sorry, questions?
I just think for correction purposes, you have 742, that's where you came up with the nine cents on the second slide, and the first slide said 741, on the mill rate.
Where did I have?
Keep going. Keep going. So, there you have it, 741, there you have it, 742.
Right, it was 742, thank you, yes. Yep, alright, yes, no, that's good catch. Yeah, so we were nine cents, because it should have been 742, which I had at the annual meeting budget hearing, I'm sorry, good catch, yes. So, I'll change that before we upload it into the public content tomorrow.
There are no other questions for John, we already had a first and a second, so let's move into all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, 5B carries. We'll move on to 5C, 2025-2026 tax levy. Do I have a motion to approve 5C?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any other discussion around this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, 5C carries. We'll move on to six reports and presentations, thank you, John. We'll move on to A, School Board Liaison Reports. I'll just go in the order that it's presented here. Last I checked, they are looking for possibly one or two more volunteer slots for the middle school dance this upcoming Friday, so if you are able to assist, they would be happy to help, have you help them. And then, they are having an eat and earn coming up at Dave's Hot Chicken on November 10th, and I believe that starts at 4:00 PM.
Where is it?
That is in, I believe that's the one in New Berlin, right off of National and Moreland. Is that right? Yeah. Right at the big intersection there.
That used to be Mod Pizza.
That's where it is, okay.
Alright, and that is all I have for that, so I'll move on to Edgerton PTO.
So, I just wanted to give a big shout-out and thank you to all the people who volunteered. Last week was a very volunteer-heavy week at Edgerton for our PTO. We had the book fair all week, and I, we had a ton of volunteers show up for that. We also had our spaghetti dinner, we partner with That's Amore, which is a very wonderful partnership, and we had to have volunteers for that. I think Boy Scouts come out as well. This year, they delivered dinners to teachers, we had families who sponsor teacher dinners, and then, we also were able to give books to all of our students, plus quite a large amount to faculty. Don't have the final numbers on that, because it finished up on Friday, and I was out of town, but I will bring those back, because we definitely had a successful book fair, and I also wanted to shout out, the kids were just absolutely wonderful. I've been volunteering and helping run the book fair for the last couple of years, and this was by far the most well-behaved students I've ever had, and their work on expectations was just so apparent. Anything else? I feel like I'm forgetting something, but I don't think so. Oh, and our meeting's next Thursday, 6:00 PM in the library. Oh, yes, we also had, that was the other last minute, we had a last-minute opportunity to volunteer at the football game, and luckily, we had some people show up for that with very short notice, so that was another big volunteer. So, parents really showed up for Edgerton last week, and it was a big ask.
It was a very busy concession night.
Yeah.
That's for sure.
And we just had a big ask, so many volunteers made last week work.
Are they gonna need volunteers again this week?
Yeah, I'll check on that, and I'll send the board an email again. Yeah, it's kind of interesting with the WIA playoffs, because we never know until Friday night, you know, or Saturday morning usually, what we're gonna go, or what we're gonna do.
Alright, we'll move on to HCE PTO.
Alright, HCE also hosted the book fair last week during conferences, Thursday, Friday, and then, it is open online through the end of this week. Very successful, as it's a fun time for, I know the adults, I hear a lot of comments around like, yes, it's book fair time, the kids get just as excited. Also, PTO sponsors meals for the staff during conferences, so they have food that they can grab, and thanks also to the volunteers, Alicia and I did a shift for the book fair on Friday morning, so we were able to help out there. And our next meeting, I don't know if we meet before that, or we talked about it before then, so it's November 18th will be the next PTO. Also, I will highlight this next time, too, but the HCPTO donated $6,000 for field trips for the year, I'm gonna highlight that up on the link in the next donations.
Hey, Cassie, for the online book fair orders, do they deliver to the school, or do they like deliver to us?
You can pick, I think.
Okay, so anybody could really order from that still?
Yes, and if you want the link, you can go to scholastic.com and search for the fair, and just look for Hills Corners Elementary, or if you're in the Hills Corners Elementary family, it's in the, it's been in the happenings for the last few weeks, and shopping through our link gives us the credit for earning free books, and then, which we then give out to the staff usually in the spring.
Sounds good. Move on to Music Boosters.
Sure. Music Boosters met on Tuesday. They have a lot going on. So, they just had an e-waste fundraiser on October 18th at House of Harley, and that was really successful. They have had some different events, the high school choir went to UW-Plattville's Choir Fest, Choral Fest, I'm sorry, on Tuesday, October 7th. Mamma Mia is coming up, there's an understudy show on November 12th, so if you want to come to that show, it's an option to see the understudies perform, and then, the performance weekend is the 14th and the 16th. The boosters helped pay for some rental instruments. The boosters helped pay for some rental instruments for one of the teachers to go, to have enough instruments to go to the elementary schools. And coming up, there's a concert on December 11th, and after that concert, it's a high school choir and orchestra concert, they are having an event where you can come and make, do holiday cookie decorating, and there's other family activities. It's just a $5 ticket for that event. There's going to be apple cider hot cocoa. And they are also going to start a poinsettia sale, and so that delivery will be that same night. So the poinsettia sale is going to start Monday, November 3rd, with the orders completed by the 21st, and then they'll be delivered the night of the concert, so they're going to like decorate the stage with them, and then you can come pick up your poinsettias after the performance. So, and come and do all the fun cookie making and games. So, let me see. The next meeting is Tuesday, November 18th, in the high school choir room.
Sounds good. We'll go over to Quinn, Greenfield Park and Rec.
Yeah, we just met this past Thursday, and one of the items on the agenda was a Eagle Scout from Martin Luther High School is going to build, we approved it. He's going to build four benches for the Jones Stevens Forest, which is on about 87th and Howard. If you ever want to take a little walk in the, in the city forest, there's one there other than ours. And then we approved some rate increases for the rental properties on, in the Greenfield. I did have one thing to report, and that was how we crushed Greenfield Hawks in, in our varsity football game. So I used a little different terminology, and it was well-taken. We haven't, we haven't, one member on the board, one of the representatives is a Whittnall graduate, and then we also have my counterpart, which is a Greenfield school board member. So I didn't want to let that die. That's all.
Nice. Go to HCE Park and Rec.
So there is one interesting to know, thing to note about Hills Corners Park. If you haven't seen the news, the Hills Corners Lions Club has signed a lease, lease with Milwaukee County Parks for the Hills Corners Park Pavilion. And they will be making the facilities available to rent out for other nonprofits or for small groups and gatherings. So there is, this is on, available on the web if you're looking to rent. There was a big ceremony to thank the club for taking over that pavilion.
That's all about a pool.
Yes. Very cool.
All right, we'll move on to SWSA, Karen.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Brady for providing a detailed summary in his October 17th board update. So CISA 1 became SWSA's fiscal agent, so they helped them with the money and the accounting and auditing and those types of things. And then there were some legislative updates. I'm curious about where that wireless communications bill is going to go on the governor's desk, so I'm on pins and needles for that one. And then the rehired Newtons bill is something that we could all advocate for as well. Brady, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't think so. I, I agree, I'm interested in hearing the, where that, you know, the wireless bill is going to go. Again, it's, it had bi, relatively bipartisan support in both the Assembly and the Senate, so not sure what the governor will do with that one, but that'll be interesting for us, especially the policy committee when we, when that, it went in, if that passes.
Sounds good, thank you. We'll move on to 6B, superintendent's report.
Yes, so since last time, we held our first Walk of Champions. This, this first Walk of Champions was for tennis player Tierney Brick, who went to state for the second consecutive year in, in tennis. So we're excited for her, and congratulations to her. We're, we're getting to the end of the, the fall sports season, so there's a whole bunch of regional and sectional events coming up. We also celebrated National School Lunch Week, and this year, the theme, if you remember last year, the theme was pizza. Lots of, several different pizzas. This year, the theme was school lunch around the world. So we enjoyed themed menu meals inspired by Japan, Italy, Greece, and Mexico. So those were very good, good meals. We also had first grade student Sadie at Edgerton, her dad Cory stopped by and shared fire safety tips as October is Fire Safety Awareness Month. Cory shared important fire safety tips, including why it's best to sleep with doors closed, what to do if you see or smell smoke, and how to set a family meeting place in case of emergency. He also showed the students his firefighting gear, and even let some of them try it on. So that was a neat experience for our Edgerton first graders. Hills Corners had their first class mail day of the year, so there's still three of those to go. Apparently, that's where they send mail to friends and teachers and all those kinds of things. Our National Honor Society students helped with that, because I believe it's a pretty big undertaking. Correct, Mrs. Comas? Yeah, so really great. We had our National Honor Society induction. This year, we had the largest class in Whittnall history. We inducted 52 new members at that meeting, so that was outstanding. And then last week, we had our author-in-residence visit the middle school, Aaron Boyd. He gave an all-school presentation on the artistic process, and then held three grade-level workshops where students created their own covers for his book, Giving Good. So those are the things that have been going on within the district over the last couple of weeks since we met last.
Sounds good, thank you. We'll move on to seven, announcements. Does anybody have any announcements? Okay, move on to eight. Does anyone have anything for meeting debrief?
I do. It just came to me, is SWSA's, are they advocating for local control in the communication, in the?
Yeah, no, actually, they're really not taking a position on that one. It's a little bit more of the, the legis, the state legislature and the, the Assembly and the, and the governor. And really, what they're saying is no cell phones or electronic devices.
I understand that, but what is?
SWA hasn't taken, no, they, they haven't taken a position either way on that, or advised to.
Is it because of the wide variety of?
I think it's because of the wide variety of membership, yeah, yeah.
Because, you know, it's local, it, I'm very comfortable with our, with our policy.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
And for Big Brother to tell us we need to do this, I don't think we, I don't think that benefits us. Some districts may, it may. So I'm concerned about that.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all.
All right. Anything else for meeting debrief? If none, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned?